Please be seated, councillors. Good afternoon, councillors, welcome to the Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council for the thirteenth of October twenty twenty two. Can I remind you to switch your mobile phones off or place them on silence, please, before we proceed? Following the last Borough Council meeting on the eighth of September, we were sadly informed of the death of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. Would members please join me in a minute's silence as a mark of respect? Thank you, councillors, please be seated. Agenda item one is apologies for absence. Can I have apologies for absence, please? councillor Brown.
councillor Cook, Leah and Carl Quartermain, councillor McCormick and councillor Pallister. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King.
Mr Mayor, we've got councillor Irene Nightingale, councillor Glynn Nightingale, councillor Chris Johns and councillor Graham Jeffrey and councillor Laxkiller are expected to join us, but will be late, thank you.
Thank you, councillor King, councillor Masse.
Just to add, councillor Williams is at the funeral and we'll be a little late.
Thank you, councillor Cutler.
councillor Fletcher, sir.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other additional councillors who have given apologies who we haven't mentioned? Okay, thank you. Item two, to receive declarations of interest. Decorations of interest forms have been circulated, the green form, please, there's an entry in them if you have any declarations of interest. Item four, item three is to confirm the accuracy of the minutes of the meeting held on the eighth of September twenty twenty two. Can I have someone move them, please?
I'll move those, Mr Mayor.
councillor Lanigan, thank you. Can I have a second, eh? Thank you, councillor Kay. Item four is to note the attendance matrix. Item five is to receive any announcements from the mayor, the leader of the council or cabinet members. I have a couple of announcements. Thank you to all those councillors who have purchased tickets, sponsored horses and donated to my charity race night on Saturday. I'm sure it'll be a good night. I will also be hosting a Thai mezze evening on the fourteenth of November. Details will be sent out to you all. On Tuesday, I attended the Redcar and Cleveland College graduation ceremony at the Kirkleven Wall Garden, which was a lovely event enjoyed by everyone. And finally, the inspiring women award is now open for nominations. Democratic Services will be circulating information on how to make a nomination. And I was told that there is fifty nine wards, so they expect fifty nine nominations. councillor Lanigan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. When we last came together as a council, we just learned that Her Majesty Queen had fallen seriously ill. We very quickly, following that, received the further news that she'd sadly passed away and the country went into a period of mourning. Our council, along with others across the country, played a leading role in the lead-up to the funeral and passing of the crown to King Charles. This role was fulfilled impeccably, and I would like to pay particular tribute to the mayor, who represented our council with such grace and dignity of the many venues that he had to attend. Many people in our borough are facing hardship due to the cost of living crisis, and I'm sure, members, that you're all aware of that. I'm pleased to say our council is implementing a range of measures to help all of our residents, and particularly the most vulnerable. I want councillors to know that I've written to the Prime Minister, as has I've written to our MPs, and I have to tell you to date I've had no reply or any acknowledgement from either of those three parties. What we are actually doing, we are including warm spaces in public buildings across the borough, advice on where to find help and advice, specific help for our most vulnerable residents, advice on cheap and healthy cooking and free hot meals for residents with no family support. And we'll continue to develop this, and I need the help of all the councillors and our community groups that we've got across, because this isn't going to go away. In fact, with what's happening down at Westminster at the moment, all I can see is it's going to get gradually worse. The council has launched a campaign to increase the amount and quality of recycling in the borough. Pupils from Southbank Primary School launched the campaign where council recycling staff put them through their paces on what and can and cannot be recycled. Around forty percent of recycling we collect is contaminated, and the council is appealing to residents to ensure that items such as plastic bags, food waste, clothes and tectiles, nappies, takeaways, polyurethane and electric items do not end up within our recycling. Doing this will reduce the amount of recycled material when it goes to landfill. Our children and families colleagues have introduced a new scheme which will provide extra support to foster children and young people. We are the first borough in the Tees Valley to take part in a scheme based on the support and the relationships an extended family provides. Again, it's an excellent example of how the council is supporting those most in need. Work has started on the adventure golf course, I'm sure you're aware, members, and the children's play area on the seafront in Cotum. It's encouraging to see that after the months of planning and preparation, that the vision is starting to become a reality. I'm sure that you're all aware that the cinema is now due to open, and you will all be informed shortly when that's going to take place. Just to let members know, Brian Archer is going to be our new director, coming in, and hopefully we will have him here, if not at Christmas, it's going to be early January when he comes in. He was an excellent candidate, he is from Harrogate, and I'm sure that you'll all get on with him extremely well. I want to thank the panel for the time that they took to do the interviews for this going forward. I was also at the college for the awards of our young people from the university, along with the mayor, and it was extremely enlightening to see all those young people striving, given that we'd actually gone through Covid, and they still achieved their degrees, so that was really good. I was up at Durham about three, four weeks ago, and this is the change from the CCG that we've got at the moment, and I know members have been into a presentation with Craig prior to this meeting. It is critically important, because I actually felt when I was up in Durham, that the NHS were taking the lead on this, and it's important that the councils feed into it. We do have a representative from Hartlepool, and it's the leader of Hartlepool Council, who sits on the top board with that, and we've agreed, along with the other twelve northern area councils, to feed in, to make sure that we get what we need with this. There were a lot of discussions that went on when I was up at Durham, and on paper it looks okay, but that's not what this is about. This is about implementing it to make sure that all our residents benefit going forward, because I actually felt that under the old regimes that we had there, sometimes they didn't listen as to what we were, the councils were doing. We are actually the people on the ground, we know what our residents need going forward, and it's up to all of us to chip into this to make sure that we get the right result. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Do any cabinet portfolio leaders have any questions? councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a statement on the twenty twenty two Ofsted report for children and families in Redcar and Cleveland Borough Council. The report on our Ofsted visit over the summer was published on September the twenty second, twenty twenty two. It was embargoed until that date, and we could not discuss it public, publicly or publish any of the findings. The overall judgment was requires improvement to be good, and although we were disappointed, we acknowledge that we are still on our improvement journey. The overall judgment was the same as in two thousand and seventeen, our last Ofsted inspection, and you may have concerns that Children's Services has not made any progress since then. This is not true, there has been a great deal of progression and improvements made, and Ofsted have acknowledged this in their statement of our strengths, of which there are many. In addition, the whole inspection framework has changed since two thousand and seventeen. We are now inspected under the ILAX, which is the Inspection of Local Authority Children's Services system. After Ofsted themselves state, under the SIF, Single Inspection Framework, we delivered a standard four-week inspection to all local authorities. The ILAX framework is a more complex system of inspection. Ofsted two thousand and seventeen was based on a snapshot taken over four weeks. Ofsted twenty twenty two was based on information gathered over a year, and as everyone knows, our data and the whole service has been affected during the past few years by the cyber attack, Covid and its associated lockdowns and their knock-on effect. The strengths: improvements in progress achieved, LADO private fostering, quality of assessment, plans and direct work, initiatives in edge of care and foster care, clear model of practice, comprehensive offer of early help, thresholds most consistent and appropriate, assessments comprehensive leading to effective multi-agency plans, child protection plans are comprehensive, call groups well attended, responsive edge of care team stickability, care leave is exceptionally positive about support, timely pre-proceedings for most and decisions for children to enter care are appropriate, social workers build positive relationships, creative in seeking children's views, effective oversight and support for children at risk of exploitation, effective procedures to identify and track children who are missing from education and EHE. Most children live in stable placements with carers who meet their needs, children's needs mostly well addressed in care planning, virtual school works proactively with other agencies to avoid permanent exclusion and the PEPP completion, education employment and training needs identified and supported, partnerships have been strengthened in response to the pandemic, and the culture of learning, staff are valued and feel proud to work for Redcar and Cleveland. However, what needs to improve? The effectiveness and consistent recording of management oversight, decision-making and quality assurance, the quality of referrals which meets the threshold for statutory services, the quality of written records, including timely assessments and decision-making to demonstrate impact for children, the response to neglect, homeless sixteen to seventeen-year-olds and return home interviews with children who have been missing, the use of unlawful and unregulated placements and the application of the correct legal framework around the child, and the corporate parent response to care leavers. We are not complacent, and we will continue to work to address the areas of concern and to take on board the feedback we have received. A cabinet report will be issued shortly, and we will discuss the Ofsted findings at scrutiny. If anyone wishes to contact me following council, I will do my best to answer their queries. Finally, I want to stress that I will advocate most strongly on behalf of our dedicated officers in the Children and Families Directorate. I know that the service is in a far better place than it was previously, owing to the strong leadership of Catherine and her assistant directors and the huge efforts made by all staff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. councillor Geoffrey, I've noticed you wish to speak, but unfortunately they are just announcements, there is no opportunity, there is no opportunity to speak. What's your point of order?
It's in relation to the information that we've just been given. Obviously, that is an extremely important report for this council, and for it to be presented to us in this way, where we can't ask questions, as you've just said, or discuss, seems a little strange to me. I understand that the lead member says that we're going to have a cabinet report, but that's a matter of weeks away, so I just don't feel that that's an approb, this is an appropriate place to have this sort of presentation about something that is so important to this council, when we should be able to ask questions, and it could have been included as a separate report to this council.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have a say in the agenda items and how they're listed, but that is the normal procedure. If a cabinet member or the leader has a question, has an announcement, unfortunately, no question's going to be asked of that. As councillor Barnes has already stated, there will be a cabinet report, and I'm sure you'll get the opportunity to question on that report in scrutiny as well. Sorry. Any other cabinet members have any announcements? Okay, thank you. Item six, the announcement from the managing director. John, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, no announcements on this occasion.
Thank you. Item seven is questions from the public, and I'm pleased to say we have a question from a member of the public today. I wish to welcome Mr Terry Galloway, who has a question directed to the leader. Go ahead, Mr Galloway, you have two minutes to ask your question.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask this question, Mr Mayor. By the time I'd lived, by the time I'd left care, I'd lived in over one hundred places. As a child in care, I didn't think that people listened. As a care leaver, I felt that I left with no voice and dumped a fend for myself. However, in the end, I made a life for myself, despite the early trauma, and run several companies and campaigned nationally. However, my brother and sister lost their children to the care system, the cycle repeats. My brother has serious trauma and is still putting up against a system not designed for care experience people. He is in and out of prison, addicted to drugs and will inevitably die early. By the time he was thirty two, he had cost the state one point two million pound. People from care are seventy percent more likely to die prematurely than others. My sister Hazel was so traumatised, abused and neglected in care, and never received the help she needed, and at thirty three years old, after many bad relationships, was stabbed in the heart by her boyfriend. Two days after disclosing to statutory services, she felt she was going to die. The system is broken. It was tragic, and it is tragic, but the real tragedy is that it's still happening. Leader, how do you think this motion listed later on the agenda for this meeting about care leavers is going to give voice to care experience people, and what difference do you think it may make?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Galloway, and I want to thank you for coming, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm really sorry to hear, and when that actually first came through about your, what had happened to you in the care system, and I'm sure to all the councillors that actually read that, it's more than tragic, it's heartrending to know that we had young people going through that system, and that had actually happened to them. And my heart goes out to you, and I know that where you are at the moment, and you have come through that, and that's for you, that was your strength, in order to wherever you got that strength from, to push you to where you are today, and to actually come to the council to say to councillors, do you realise this is going on? Because without people like you, then we don't know, and although we are all corporate parents, and I sit on the corporate parenting board, and we talk to those young people, we still need people like you to come and say to us, this is what happened, and this is what I feel is still going on. So, I'm well aware of the disadvantages that those care experiencing face, and how this can adversely affect them. This is why, by you letting us know and this motion coming to council, so that we can address these very issues. I feel that Redcar and Cleveland Council, we do an awful lot, but I actually feel that there may be some missing elements in there that people with your experience can help us with going forward. So this motion is actually coming to council today, and I'm quite sure that everyone, having looked at this, will actually vote for this and bring this through. The motion is acknowledged that thousands of care experienced people living in our society today continue to live with often tragic consequences of trauma and discrimination, suffer throughout their childhood and beyond. Because what happens to those young people in care if that is a very bad experience and it seems as if that's exactly what happened to you and your family? Once you are embedded in that going forward, that's very difficult, without a lot of help, to get out of that at the other side, because they're damaged, and that damage runs deep in a lot of these young people that we've got. The motion will require us all to stop and think about whether we are doing the right thing, and to consider the individual rights and needs of the child or the adult, so that our actions or decisions are not discriminating against them, either directly or indirectly. And members, I just want to say that acceptance of the motion means that any decisions made by the council must consider the impact on care experienced people in the same way that other protective characteristics such as race, gender or disability would be considered. For example, it means that any actions taken that could be deemed discriminatory would be challenged accordingly, thus ensuring that all individuals are treated fairly. Mr Gallagher, I know that you've come to see us today, I wouldn't like following this motion, I wouldn't like to think that we lose you from that, and that your experience can actually feed in to help us going forward with anything that we need to do with that, and that we can rely on your experiences, and I know that you've campaigned a great deal with this, but because of the knowledge that you've got, that may help us as an organisation make sure that we're doing every single thing possible that we can in order to try to alleviate what's happened, and I'm hoping we aren't going to be able to catch everybody, but with this motion and with you, then maybe we will stop an awful lot of this going forward, and that can only be a positive. So thank you very much indeed for coming.
Thank you, councillor Lanigan. Mr Galloway, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Leader, thank you, thank you so much for that. The motion, it starts here in this chamber, but this is about community, this is about everybody having responsibility. Now, these children are the only group, or care experienced people are the only group that you are corporate parents, and that's what makes it different, but passing the motion today and the call on an extension of corporate parenting to all public bodies will really galvanise your community and your networks to help you to help our children. So that is what this is about, and I would really like to know, leader, how you would feel if you got unanimous support today from all colours, because this isn't a political issue, this is our children.
councillor Lanigan.
So that, Galloway, that everybody in the chamber is well aware of that, and this isn't just about a motion that's come to council today, that we will then look at it on a piece of paper, it's not about that. This has got to be embedded as to what this motion is about, and the other bodies that we work with, with inside and outside the council, have got to take this seriously, and they have got to, and we will make sure, and the cabinet member that we've got here who is excellent for children's services, will make sure that everybody is involved in every aspect of what we do as a council going forward. So thank you very much indeed.
Mr Galloway, on behalf of the councillors present, may I thank you for your question this afternoon, and obviously your previous, and may I say at times sad and tragic, experience of the care system? It's greatly appreciated that you've attended today and asked those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is to receive the report, and today is the report on children, you know, care and care leavers update report, which is going to be presented by which is going to be presented by councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the Children in Our Care and Care Leavers Update Report for quarter one, which is April, May and June twenty twenty-two. The fostering team have continued with their recruitment campaign and have attended a variety of events such as Redcar Gala and the Races. We were also at the Festival of Thrift and at other places too. Within the quarter, there have been twenty-six inquiries about becoming a foster carer, with six families being supported through an assessment. Should they be successful, they will have taken part in the Skills to Foster training last month. We launched our Mockingbird model on the third of September with a fun-packed day at the beach. This involved the families who are in the constellation having the opportunity to meet each other and start to develop those really important connections to form a supportive community. Councillor King and I were both there, and a good time was had by all. Over quarter one, we were supporting twenty-one young people in our care and thirty-four care leavers. Two unaccompanied young people are classed as missing. It was three, however, one of them has been found in Germany, and he is now classed actually as as an adult. We held an event in June which coincided with Refugee Week. This was coordinated and led by the team in Redcar and had other local authorities attending. It was a very successful day with one of our young people sharing the following powerful statement. "In the beginning, it was hard for me because I could not understand the people in this country, not just the language, but in general. I felt like I did not fit in, but after a few months, it got easier. I met kind people, I made friends, and I've been improving my English, which I'm still working on, and it's going well." The he was not the only person who actually spoke at the at the event. There were several, and it was really really affecting to the people in the audience. At the end of August, the government announced that with immediate effect, they would be increasing the threshold where a local authority is no longer expected to receive unaccompanied young people under the National Transfer Scheme. The current level of naught point naught seven percent will become naught point one percent of a local authority's general child population. For Redcar, this means we will take an additional seven young people to add to the nineteen that we were previously allotted to take. We currently have a hundred and forty-seven care leavers being supported, thirty-one of whom are over the age of twenty-one. Ninety-two are engaged in education, employment or training, and four of our young people will be commencing university this month. This is a great achievement and one which we should celebrate. This means we will have nine of our young people at university. There are fifty-five young people who are not in education, employment or training. However, we are working hard to offer support to them to try and build their confidence and skills. There are three care leavers who continue on the Kickstart Programme. Their programme came to an end in September, so they will receive dedicated support to explore and apply for progression routes and permanent employment. We also have six apprentices. We are currently training mentors for our neat young people, and currently have seventeen trained mentors, fourteen of whom are DBS cleared, and twelve have been matched to young people, seven of whom are care leavers. In May, some of our younger children in care joined an arts day as part of a national consultation. This was the Artsmark event. I popped in to see them, and I can confirm they were having a great time, being creative, and having the opportunity to have their voice heard. As has been previously reported, we have been worried about the number of suspensions within education. I'm pleased to report that over the quarter, we have seen a reduction, moving from twenty-nine over quarter four to twenty-one in quarter one. We have seen the positive impact of bespoke interventions, increased training provided to schools on trauma-informed practice, and challenge around academy and trust-level behaviour policies. At the end of June twenty twenty-two, we had thirty different children in our care receive suspensions this year, equating to nine point six of our cohort. This is a reduction of five percent from fourteen point six of the cohort at the end of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. At the end of June, we had twenty-six young people active to the vulnerable exploited missing and traffic pathway. Eleven of these people were young people in our care. To further support development across the service in this area, we have delivered workshops to staff with a focus on case studies and how our criminal, child criminal exploitation toolkit can support working with young people. Finally, our No Wrong Door Ofsted registration is underway. All the required forms have been submitted, and we are now awaiting the call to say that they will visit the home and meet with the registered manager. The team at No Wrong Door have continued to support some of our young people on the edge of care. There have been forty-eight young people who have been supported, and it is noted that out of those forty-eight, sixteen have been assessed as having a speech and language lead which has been previously unknown. Appendix one attached to my report contains the full data sets and analysis where appropriate. I commend the report to council. Thank you.
Can I have a second for that report, please?
That, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Anigan. Questions? And have councillor Hanaway?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your report. I think the Mockingbird scheme is obviously a very welcome development. And I watched the video link that you've got in your report, it's a very nice video. I couldn't help noticing it does have younger, mainly younger, nicely behaved and very smiley children in it. But obviously, it is a promotional video. But the model is obviously an experienced foster carer as the hub, helping less experienced foster carers around her with advice and social events and things like that. And I just wondered, as well as that support role, is there some kind of reviewing role as well? In other words, is is that experienced foster carer just supporting them? Or will will they be part of the the annual review? Because obviously, that's a bit different, isn't it? Is it just support, or is it a kind of supervisory role as well? And the only other thing I wanted to say was, I wondered if in your announcement, maybe you missed out the most important point about the Ofsted result, which is that if Ofsted had considered any of the decisions made about any particular child to be wrong, we would have failed. So they didn't.
Does any other councillor wish to speak on this report? If that's the case, councillor Barnes, would you like to sum up, please?
Thank you for the question. As regards Mockingbird, yes, there is a reviewing process. The the hub leader does reports on a regular basis, you know, to to both to Mockingbird, because it's, as you know, it's a project at the moment, a program, sorry, a program which is being run for a particular period of time initially. So they are reporting back to Mockingbird because it's very important that we maintain the rigor of the actual model. But in addition to that, they are reporting back to the fostering service. As to your specific question, whether they will have an input into the reviews of the individual foster carers, I would say, yes, they they are, but I must confess, I haven't been told that directly. I'm just assuming that they would. But I will, if I'm wrong in that, I will definitely let you know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Can I have general agreement in passing that report, please? Okay, that is passed, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number nine is to receive the reports from the portfolio holder, and this is the report of the cabinet member for health and wellbeing, councillor Kay. Can I remind you that a period of ten minutes may be given in relation to delivering your report, and questions which are asked of it must be succinct and relate directly to matters within that report. Councillor Kay.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I won't forget, you reminded me at least weekly for the last fifty-two weeks, or whatever it was since I last gave my report. Ten minutes is allowed. My report provides an update on progress, developments and key issues covered by the Health and Welfare Portfolio over the past year. The council plan, our flourishing future, sets out the vision, values and priorities for the borough. This report outlines how the Health and Welfare Portfolio has delivered against that plan. The council has faced a third year of immense challenges in service delivery, and of course, the service areas within my portfolio have been at the forefront of the responses to Covid nineteen and now the cost of living crisis. Our object is to mitigate the consequences in terms of both physical and mental health. Needless to say, our people are up to these overlapping challenges. Our teams led locally on test and trace and continue to implement magnificently, successfully, pop-up vaccination sessions in low take-up areas of the borough. I actually visited one of these myself for my booster job just yesterday. To date, around eight thousand people have been vaccinated via this service. In addition, our Health Protection Team has continued to provide Covid-safe operating guidance to our businesses and responded to far higher numbers of queries from the public than in normal times. Through our Public Health and Communities Teams, we led not only in testing, but in the interpretation of the science and associated data, data expertly reported via our communications section to both members and residents. The teams continue to play a pivotal part in our continued vigilance regarding the virus, as well as having a leading and vital role in the vaccination programme. Thanks are due to all staff for their extraordinary efforts in such unprecedented and challenging times. Public Health South Tees has continued to deliver strategically to both Redcar and Cleveland and to Middlesbrough. It gives us efficiency, sustainability and resilience, together with greater capacity to deliver public health and protection services. Public Health South Tees supports people facing multiple vulnerabilities and develops programmes on dementia-friendly communities, parenting skills, suicide prevention, mental and physical health, tobacco control, affordable warmth, the arts for health and sexual health. In addition, Public Health South Tees was a significant resource in our joint response to Covid nineteen. Our Health and Wellbeing Board, Live Well South Tees, has the vision to empower the citizens of South Tees to live longer and healthier lives. The board works towards these outcomes by: first, addressing the underlying causes of health and social inequalities across communities; second, integration and collaboration across planning, commissioning and service delivery; third, getting information and advice out to the public, together with the production and sharing of data. This year, apart from the battle against Covid, the work of the Live Well South Tees Board has included: first, supporting the development of the Joint Strategic Needs Assessment and the update of the Health and Wellbeing Strategy; second, working with place-based partners to transform the delivery of mental health provision; third, supporting the Better Care Fund and associated plan to enable people to live longer and independently in their own homes, and improving outcomes for people discharged from hospital. Our strategy of helping people with complex vulnerabilities has been reinforced thanks to the procurement by Public Health South Tees of over three million Changing Futures funding from the government and the National Lottery. We have responded to the Domestic Abuse Act twenty twenty-one by producing a local needs assessment. As a result, April saw the creation in our borough of the Thrive Partnership to tackle domestic abuse and substance misuse. We Are With You deals with substance abuse. Harbour covers domestic abuse, whilst Thinking Skills provides recovery and ambassador services. Through a partnership with the primary care networks, we are developing a pilot project for social prescribing. We tackle smoking through the South Tees Smoke Free Alliance, and despite the pandemic and the cost of living crisis, we still retain our ambitious aim to reduce smokers to five percent by two thousand and twenty-five. Suicide is a serious challenge in the borough, at seventeen point four per hundred thousand, which is above the England and North East rates of ten point four percent and twelve point four percent respectively. The reduction of suicide is the work of the Tees Suicide Prevention Task Force, led by the Tees Suicide Prevention Coordinator. There is a statutory duty for local authorities, clinical commissioning groups and the NHS to promote sexual health through contraception and the treatment of STDs. We do this within a Tees-wide strategy, formally in partnership with Virgin Care, bought out in December by the Healthcare and Resourcing Group. Our borough is the lead partner of the You've Got This Programme to improve the health, both physical and mental, of the inactive, the overweight, diabetics and those awaiting surgery. We hosted Beat the Street, aimed at increasing activity amongst children and families. Almost seventeen thousand took part and covered a distance to equivalent to six times round the world by foot or other self-propelled methods. By now, Mr Mayor, I've probably had my ten minutes. The remainder of what I've been involved is contained within my written report. Thank you.
Councillor Kay, you've done yourself short, you had two and a half minutes left. So if you want to... Yes, yeah. Do we have any questions for councillor Kay? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, councillor Kay, for your report. In the cost of living, you mentioned the development of power for warm spaces. I'm already feeling that the temperature is dropping quite significantly over the last fortnight. I'm just wanting to know, is there any more detail on that? For instance, will the estates, the council estate officers be open after operating hours, when we've got the most temperature drop and the sun goes down? Yeah, so I'm just, is there any more sort of meat on the bones to that and what you plan to do, councillor Kay, because it is mid-October now?
Councillor Kay?
Yeah, I think we were very quick off the mark in developing our thirty-point strategy regarding to the cost of living crisis. I won't bore you by reading out the thirty points which we've included in there. We don't want to, we want to open our warm spaces, quite rightly, to people who basically can't afford to heat their homes. The the strategy needs to be developed a bit further. You know, I've been thinking this over, actually, and, you know, we don't just, well, perhaps we do, but I think it would be better if we didn't have people sort of dossing down in the big foyer at Belmont House or something like that. You know, I think we need to be, to do something constructive to facilitate... to facilitate people and also perhaps to entertain them, you know. This is just me talking from the top of my head, but, you know, perhaps television for example, because, you know, it's demeaning, isn't it, to just sit in a chair or lie on the floor all day just to keep warm. And perhaps we can integrate... They need to keep people warm with some of the things we're advocating in our other policies, like, you know, helping people to get employment for example. And, you know, we've got this scheme whereby... We want to be comprehensive. If people contact us at any point, whether it could be about council tax benefits, anything, we want to be able to just explore a little bit and if they bring up other problems that they've got, to direct them or advise them to us where they can get help. Now, people who need warmth are people who probably need other types of help. So I think we've got to be cautious here because we don't want to embarrass people, but I think we could look at that side of it as well. I'm sorry, I have no knowledge. I'm sure the officers are working at definite proposals and definite locations, but I can't give you any more details at this time.
Thank you councillor Kay. Councillor Holley-Hock?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for that report to Steve. Actually, just a comment going on with what councillor Brown's just said. I would certainly not advocate this building as a warm space, because I am absolutely frozen here. So I think I'd be going to Brickyard Bakery and seeing my friend dead, I think. Right, but actually, a lot of the things I do would like to discuss, and I've actually managed to wrap most of them into one question. And it is a question that we've been asked frequently at the adults in health and wellbeing scrutiny. It's questions that were raised while we were in the pre-briefing, members briefing with Craig Blair, and that's the fact that you're saying, like, 3.2, supporting the health of your children and young people in schools, providing hot foods, 4.1, update on development to mental health services, creating visions for the future, joint health and social care plans, social prescribing, et cetera. Where are we going to get the staff from? And how are we going to get these qualified staff to actually help us deliver a lot of these services? Because today, I mean, it came out with, this is NHS England, that we have lost, 300 midwives have left the profession who are still under retirement age in the last two months. Now, I'm sure there's members here, such as Deborah and Louise, who can answer this question a lot better than I can, but my thinking is it must take at least four years to train a midwife, for a midwife to become qualified. Where are we going to get these people from? I mean, I don't want people delivering some of these services who've done a six-week course.
Councillor Holley-Hock, is that your question?
My question is, where are we going to get all this qualified staff from so we can deliver on some of these promises? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kay?
Well, I'd say from the start that nobody's been to me and said, Steve, we can't do this, that and the other, we can't continue doing this, that and the other because we're short of staff. So I'm assuming that, that at the moment we can deliver the services which I've mentioned in my report. But I do agree with you and one of my favourite hobby horses is about GPs because we're short of GPs. We're begging people to come from abroad to be GPs in the United Kingdom. You know, what we should, what the government should be doing, we don't have any control over this, is to be training more GPs, putting them through the universities. Our, in our six forms, there must be thousands and thousands of kids who would like to be doctors and yet we're not training enough doctors. Now, it applies to what you're saying and I agree. A brief course isn't sufficient. We should be looking for graduates who have done associated subjects and bringing them in. But as all I can say is, we're delivering these services now and we will do our utmost to continue to deliver them. We provide as much training in-house as we can, but it is a national problem and I haven't got all the, all the solutions to national problems, particularly in the present economic climate, which by the way, will be coming down on this council very shortly, if not already.
Thank you councillor Kay. Councillor Corley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillor Kay for your report. If I can just go to 5.21, which is regarding the environmental protection and the blue flag for Saltburn. My concern is, this is an annual report and you haven't mentioned the mass die-off that we had on our beaches. There is no mention of the fact that since this blue flag was awarded, we are now spilling sewage onto our beaches. We are one of the best beaches, Saltburn, within, well, definitely within the North East, one of 80 as it says in the report of the UK. I'm, I'm hate to say it, but next year, how are we going to achieve that blue flag when we are spilling sewage onto our beaches, when we have mass die-offs that are due to and are happening again? I just think it's all fine and dandy writing that, but we also in a report need some of the negatives rather than just all the positives because it's factual and it is happening. So I just want to know, one, there's that with the sewage and the dredging, if that's the case, or even the die-offs. But we talk about the air quality and I thank councillor Kay and councillor Westbury for coming to Dormanstown after my question about the air quality. However, we are still having, recently, we had the BOSS plant that exploded, the biggest explosion that the UK has seen.
Councillor Corley, question please.
Yep. So since that, and you drive through Dormanstown and the particles that are tested within the air quality are microscopic, these you can taste it when you're in Dormanstown. I do know that the EA are working on that, but whilst ever we're blowing buildings up, that dust goes somewhere. And three water jets just was not enough. So I want to know how are we going to make sure that that does not happen again? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Corley. Councillor Kay?
I was limited to 10 minutes. If you look in the body of my report, you'll see that I do talk about the blue flag. I do, I do talk about crustaceans. I do talk about the things you've mentioned. So, you know, I... Well, okay, I'll take your word for it. I thought, right, okay. Blue flag, first of all. The, the last two reports from Saltburn and across the Redcar as well, the bathing beaches there have come out as being excellent. So I don't say that's going to even get Saltburn a blue flag because we've had some bad results earlier than that. As I explained to councillor Thompson at the last meeting, the Environment Agency will only test where, locations where the bathing occurs. We don't test the water, they do. And then we get scored accordingly. And of course, that we end up getting a graded result each time and this is thrown into the mix, into the formula for giving us a score which could hopefully give us a blue flag again. You mentioned pollution. I've had no indication that pollution, putting the crabs and crustaceans to one side for me, I've had no indication that other types of pollution, particularly for example sewage, have been any worse in recent months than previously. As far as the crustaceans, as far as the crustaceans are concerned, they... We've had, you'll remember the motion that was agreed after a great deal of difficulty a few months, two months ago it must be. We have written to the other authorities, we've written to the government on the, the elements which were agreed inside that motion. And in fact, today, strangely enough, we've had some good news. We didn't really think that, I won't say that because it might get into the paper. Right, we've got good news that Middlesbrough have agreed to a joint scrutiny with ourselves and the other authorities, if the other authorities are interested. No other authority apart from Middlesbrough has agreed to a joint scrutiny committee. So we're going to explore that further. We'll obviously be telling the other Cleveland and coastal authorities that this is going to go ahead no matter what between ourselves and Middlesbrough, but we'll be inviting them in as well. So that is a step forward. And of course, as you've probably read in the paper, that Sir Robert Goodwill, who is the chairman of the Select Committee, Parliamentary Select Committee, luckily for us, is also MP for Scarborough and Whitby, that he is putting the matter of the dead crustaceans along our coast onto his agenda, which I'm sure we'll get the attention of the government. So we'll have to just wait and see how that develops. And I think we should thank Sir Robert Goodwill, in fact, for implementing this, because, believe you or me, it's been very difficult to get the government to listen. I know the directors listened to, has written to the government, councillor Lanigan has written to the government. They've had no replies, which isn't unusual on this particular matter. At least now somebody is listening and some, something is going ahead. Now, on the air quality, of course, ironically, the air quality monitor is actually in Dormanstown. You know, so it's rather strange. I can see why it's there because Dormanstown is the build, the nearest built-up area to the, to the work. So it's natural that the monitor should be there. As you mentioned, we measure particulates in the air, 10pm and above and two, sorry, and below and 2.5pm beneath. The 2.5, very fine dust is the most dangerous because if you breathe it in, it can not only get into your lungs, it can get into your bloodstream. And so, you know, we must take this air pollution very seriously. Now, you're right, we came down to see you in Dormanstown, it must be about three months ago now, I can't quite remember. I, you know, I, I felt the air was dusty. I didn't have a monitor on me, but I felt the air was dusty. And when we visited that shop that starred sportswear, I, they, you know, we could see the dust. I'm not going to lie to cover up for anybody, we could see the dust on the clothing in the poor lady's shop, I mean, which wasn't good for sales. And also, it's not healthy at all to be living in those conditions. Now, unfortunately perhaps, the monitors still give satisfactory results. So all I can think, and this is me talking now, not an expert, all I can think is that some of that dust is localised. I do understand however, that I think perhaps yourself and other people were given a diary to fill in, you know, when you felt it was extra dusty or, you know, and perhaps comment on how bad it was at particular times. Whether those diaries have been collected, I'm not quite sure. But I did, it was reported to me that you actually said you thought the situation had improved. Is that correct councillor Corley? Well, perhaps I shouldn't ask you a question.
No, it's not a debate councillor Kay.
My information is that, in fact, you felt that things had improved a bit. I'm not saying we are responsible for improving anything by the way, but it may be that we came on a bad day when, you know, with the demolition and everything going on, that causes a lot of dust. So that's where we are. The monitors say everything's okay. You were not convinced, I'm not convinced. It's a bit like the crabs lately, that there are differences of opinion. And what stares you in the face doesn't always fit in with scientific investigation.
Thank you councillor Kay. We're well over our allocated time for this agenda item. Councillor Kay, I know this might be difficult, but in your response, can you be a little bit more concise and a little bit more briefer? It's unfair on me being strict with the questionnaires and then you're talking for about 10, 15 minutes. So, thank you. Councillor Sue Jeffrey?
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Kay for your report. Five very quick questions, very quick, very quick. First one is, when you give evidence to the Select Committee on Crustacean Die-offs, can you please share your evidence with the full of council? Secondly, in relation to cold, warm rooms, are you intending to keep our libraries open for longer because that's the obvious place where people can keep warm? So can you confirm that please? Thirdly, in relation to paragraphs about the leisure facilities, could you tell me please where we're up to with the levelling up bid for Greater Eston and when we'd like to know whether or not we've got the money for Eston Baths? And could you confirm if we get the money for Eston Baths from the levelling up bid, that the plans for the learner pool will in fact be implemented? And then finally, your very last paragraph on the report says, we have significant leisure asset challenges over the next 11 years to provide modern, fit-for-purpose leisure facilities, which will need significant capital investment and will need to think about how we deal with them. Can you tell me what your thinking is about the future of our leisure services, please? Thank you.
Councillor Kay?
Each time could I?
I can indeed.
Sorry. You're asking whether I would publish that evidence? Yes, we, I'm assuming that's okay to do if we get the opportunity.
Will you keep the libraries open as warm rooms?
Apparently, we've already taken the decision to extend the, the opening of the libraries.
Ward members know, so we can let people know?
Yes, I'm sure that can be arranged.
Levelling up bid for Eston?
Yes, right, I'll be straight with you. This, this is going ahead, whether we get levelling up money or not, but we're not having a learner pool. So that's the answer to that.
No learning pool, even if we get the levelling up money?
No, no. Look, I'm being criticized.
Can I interject here? No debate councillor Jeffrey, he's given your answer. If you want to do that privately, do so. Well, I did explain no learner pool, sorry.
Very quickly was, when are you going to start reviewing the leisure services? Because it says here we can't afford to keep them open.
Just, just on the, you know, I'll be honest with you, you're lucky to be getting that pool at all and you should thank your lucky stars.
Councillor Kay, I don't, I don't think that is appropriate.
It is.
No, it isn't. Answer the questions. You're making a political statement there.
This is a political arena.
Well, you're answering the questions from the councillors.
Every other authority is closing pools now.
Councillor Kay, thank you. Councillor Jeffrey, did councillor Kay answer your questions? Uh, councillor Jeffrey, did councillor Kay answer your questions? Would, would you answer that one please?
You know, the, the council is going to be strapped for cash. So we will be starting, I mean, even though Aston Pool is going ahead and you should, I've, I've been telling people soon Jeffy will be getting a lovely Christmas present. Uh, but you won't get, you'll only get one present, the big pool.
Thank you councillor Kay, come.
Yes, but I'm getting round to it.
Well, answer it please.
Right, yes, well, obviously, under the economic circumstances, we have no option but to do a review of our leisure services. But obviously we won't be opening the poll and then closing it straight away. So I think you're, you're home and, you're home and dry, or home and wet.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey for your questions. Uh, councillor Gallagher.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. A question with paragraph 5.5, social prescribing, which is something that I totally support. However, it seems there's a black hole in the delivery and that there's no mention of the Greater Aston area being involved in the social prescribing system. Is this a function of the distribution of the primary care network? Or is it a function that we've, uh, no problems in the Greater Aston area?
Councillor Kay.
Function of the primary care networks, uh, but it was started in Redcar East Cleveland, but now we've got two social prescribers starting up in the Aston area. So the whole borough will be included.
Thank you councillor Kay, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like, I'd like to return to the, uh, Saltburn Beach, the blue flag. Uh, Chair, there is so much misinformation perpetrated in, in this respect. And I very quickly, within the two minutes allocated, I have never seen so many.
Councillor Thompson, it should be a question, not a statement.
I'm leading up to my question. So I've never seen so many short-term pollution reports for this authority for Saltburn Beach. Now, in the report, it refers to the practice and the promise that more efforts are being made to improve bathing water quality. And when we think, Mr Mayor, that the sampling is not done in the blue flag area, it is so incongruous. Therefore, I would like specific requ- to request specifically, what ambitious infrastructure that is referred to in 5214, which is being undertaken to improve bathing water quality? So that is my question. Can we have full details of that infrastructure? Now, if it's not possible to have it this afternoon, can we have it in writing tomorrow?
Thank you councillor Thompson, councillor Kay.
Yeah, you know, Saltburn usually scores an excellent. Every time we get a report, you, I know you've fallen by the wayside slightly recently, but you know, you don't know how lucky you are compared with other areas, to be quite honest. Or they'd be getting blue flags as well. You're complaining about.
Councillor Kay, councillor Thompson has asked you a question, can you answer that please?
With regard to the infrastructure improvements, I will, I'm sure Patrick will be making a note of this. We will get to you with that information, thank you.
Thank you councillor Kay. I have councillor Lanigan and councillor Hanaway. I will, I will not be taking any other questions after councillor Hanaway. Councillor Lanigan.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, councillor Kay, can I ask that you pursue Tees Works and the Environment Agency to attend the climate scrutiny committee? And to make sure that they come following the issues that we've had in Dorminstown? And can I also ask that you would contact the MP down at Scarborough during his investigations into the DEFRA and the university reports? So that we are well aware of that. And the reason I ask you that councillor Kay is that I did contact both our MPs and lobbied them hard in order to see if we could open this investigation. Um, and, um, I've had no reply from them. So I'm indebted to the MP from Scarborough that is actually doing this, but we need to pursue that on behalf of the residents of our coastal areas. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yes, I don't think we've got any objection against that. Perhaps you'd put it in an email, Mary, and just let me know and then I can make sure every element is covered, thank you.
Thank you councillor Lanigan. Councillor Hanaway.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Obviously, at the moment, we've got families that can't afford to, the energy to heat their homes. And at the same time, we've got a charity lighting up public buildings in purple, which obviously seems a bit tasteless. Obviously, it's a very, the subject of perinatal mental health is very, very important. But could we persuade them to do it in a different way? Yes, we've got the juxtaposition of families not able to heat their homes and a charity that's planning to light up public buildings in purple. Um, now, I don't know what the energy cost of that is, but it does seem a bit of a tasteless juxtaposition. It's an important charity, but could we persuade them to maybe advertise it differently?
I'd love the name of the charity.
It's a, it's a perinatal, uh, men- mental health, um, charity. Uh, I forgot the name.
Councillor Jeffrey, can you assist?
Raindrops to rainbows.
Yeah, so what, so what do you want me to do with it?
Yes, we'll read your own report. But, but secondly, could you persuade them to advertise their important work in a way that uses less energy?
I've got that, right, I'm sure that can be done.
Thank you, that concludes the agenda item. Item 10 is to consider the reports. And we have one report, uh, the report on Vertu, Tees Valley Limited. Approval to be admitted body of the Teeside Pension Fund, who is presenting this please?
Uh, I'll do that.
Thank you councillor Lanigan.
Councillor Nightingale isn't, isn't here. So the summary of the report, members, I'm sure you've got it in front of you. This report seeks authority for, for Vertu, Tees Valley Limited to be, uh, admitted body to the Teeside Pension Fund. It's recommended that the council gives its approval, Tees Valley Limited to become admitted body to the pension fund with effect from the first of January 2020 onwards. I don't know why, uh, Mr Mayor, it said with effect from first of January 2020, because we're already in 2022. So perhaps one of the officers could clarify that. Um, the managing director be authorized to execute any appropriate agreement to put this approval into effect. Um, I'm sure that you've all read the detailed proposals on this, members, and what the objectives of the report are and how that's linked to council priorities. But just to let you know, on the 5th of November 2019, Cabinet agreed to establish an internal audit service for the council in conjunction with Middlesbrough and this group through the creation of a new company. The creation of the group resulting in five internal audit staff from the council having their employment transferred to this company under legislation commonly known as TP regulations, whereby these employees were afforded protection of the employment terms and conditions, um, to what we've got. So I would ask, um, Mr Mayor, if that could be particularly the first of January 2020, because I'm sure it was say 2022 on that. So if we could just alter that and ask members to agree the report, please.
Thank you councillor Lanigan, I'm being advised that that is the correct date, 2020. Bye. Okay, thank you. Can I have a seconda please for that report? Uh, if you wait a moment, I'm asking for a seconda first. Thank you councillor Kay. Uh, questions councillor Ayer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, under 3.2, we talked about transfer, um, of undertaken, uh, from the, our inter, five internal audit staff from the council to the employment transfer to, I can never pronounce it. It's a Veritow. Well, whatever it is. Um, that, that only, under the, under the legislation on, uh, on TP, that only guarantees the terms and conditions there for 45 days. It used to be, it used to be 90 days until this government got in there and I think they changed it about 2012, something like that. So yes, it's only a guarantee. Uh, 45 days. After that, the new employer, if he, if they're so deemed, can offer new terms and conditions of employment. And if the, uh, the new employee doesn't accept, I think it's within, after six, uh, after six weeks, they can be deemed there that they've dismissed themselves. Uh, can we guarantee if our terms and conditions are better than what they would receive from the new employee, that our term to their term of conditions will continue as we have done as a council in the past? When we've had employees transferred under TP into another, another company? Thank you Chair.
Councillor Lanigan, thank you councillor Lanigan, end of the, councillor Lanigan, it's at the end of, uh, questions that you can answer that question. Uh, councillor Thompson.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I, I thought it might be helpful, and I can understand the leader's position, having to fill in to present this report. Just to clarify the time scales, and it does seem appropriate to me that what, what is actually in the narrative is correct. So I, I, I think it might be helpful for members who've not had the opportunity to read the report to, to look at 3.5, 3.6. And, and this is talking about retrospective cover for pension entitlement because of the delay in the cabinet not having all of the text at the time when it made the approval. So I'm very supportive of the, uh, the.
Thank you councillor Thompson, any other questions? Councillor Barnes, sorry. Councillor Barnes.
Uh, yes, it's not a question actually, I do apologize. Um, I was going to, uh, present this report, I nipped out and I didn't realize that you'd started it. Uh, can I just reassure everybody that I've got some notes here from, um, uh, Rob Daviesworth, who was, uh, involved in actually writing the report. And, um, he says that the delay in resolving this final aspect of the admissions, admissions proced- sorry, admissions process is due to the council not having received a request from Teeside Pension Fund to sign and approve the agreement between the Teeside Pension Fund, Veritow, and the council to create the admitted body status until summer 2022. That's the delay between it being created in 2020 and now. Council should be assured that employees and current pension fund members have not been disadvantaged in the meantime. In other words, we've got confirmation that any concerns regarding TP have been dealt with and, uh, there's no disadvantage, that's what I've been told. So I say I do apologize to, to members for not being here to present it.
Okay, uh, councillor Lanigan, would you like to sum up and hopefully answer councillor Ayer's question?
Sir Ayer, I don't know whether that satisfied what councillor Barnes actually said there because I don't know, and I know that you are well up on employment law and what's been happening with TP and things like that. So I am presuming, because this has come through from the offices and they are telling us that everything that was in place should be in place and that it's been done correctly. And it appears, from what councillor Barnes is saying at the moment, um, that none of the employees have suffered because of that, um, going forward. So I hope that that is okay with you. And as for, um, councillor Thompson with that, that was my mistake because had councillor Barnes been here, but it was just me reading it and it said 2020. And I'm thinking, right, well, that's more than two years ago. So that was my error on that. But I think it has been covered by what councillor Barnes has said. And this is about our employees and I'm sure that council will approve this going forward. Thank you.
Um, thank you councillor Lanigan. Uh, I'm going to bring in Mr Newton, um, to just clarify the situation. If you can, uh, satisfy councillor Ayer in his query.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, in terms of TP protection, it's actually indefinite, so there is no 45 or 30 day limit. Um, TP protection goes on. Um, employers can technically change terms and conditions if they've got what's called an economic, technical or organizational reason for doing that, um, which I won't go into detail, but Veritow is effectively a local authority owned company. I can't see there being any prospect or intention of them seeking to change staff terms and conditions really. So I don't think there's a concern from that perspective councillor Ayer.
Okay, thank you, Mr Newton, for that. Uh, any other questions? If not, can I have agreement in relation to that report please? Kind of show of hands. That is carried, thank you. Item 11 is to consider motions and we have a, one motion today, and that is by councillor Barnes. And, uh, I understand duly seconded by councillor King. Councillor Barnes.
Thank you.
Are you going, sorry, I'm interrupting you. Do you want to take the motion as read or would you like to sort of briefly go over it?
Um, yeah, I, I very, very, I'm not going to read it all out, but I'd like to briefly go over it and just make some comments at the end if I may, is that okay? Yeah, the, the, this motion is, is as a result of the independent review of children's social care, which was headed by Josh McAllister and published in May 2022. Um, the report included, government should make care experience a protected characteristic. A new legislation should be passed which broadens corporate parenting responsibilities across a wider set of public bodies and organizations. This is what he recommended. Now, we're not in a position to obviously be able to, to set that legislation in motion ourselves. However, we are in a position to pass this motion for the, uh, the Borough Council. We, as a council, we recognize that care experienced people are a group who are likely to face discrimination. I have actually been in contact with, um, the head of our leaving care team. And she's given me several examples of discrimination in action. And I have to say that the main area of discrimination appears to be in housing. And that's something obviously which is very, very important for our care leavers because they are moving out of a, um, foster care situation and living independently. And it's something that they, they need a fair amount of support with. But also they need to know that when they apply for, uh, housing, um, through, uh, beyond housing or whatever housing association it is, that they will be, that they will not be discriminated against. Um, and as I said, this is the area which appears to be that, at the moment, the most, um, prominent in our area. The council recognises that we have a duty to put the needs of disadvantaged people at the heart of decision making through cooperation and collaboration. Being a care experienced person is a disadvantage. As was so eloquently described by Mr Gallagher, it puts anyone who is a care experienced child at disadvantage. And some people, it affects, obviously, to a greater extent than others. But without exception, all care experienced people are disadvantaged. The future decisions services and policies made and adopted by the council should be assessed through equality impact assessments to determine the impact of changes on people with care experiences alongside those who formally share a protected characteristic. So, we're doing this already. All we need to do is to ensure that these equality impact assessments include those people who are care experienced. That in the delivery of the public sector equality duty, the council includes care experience in the publication and review of equality objectives and the annual publication of information relating to people who share a protective characteristic in services of employment. As you know, we have only recently set up our equalities panel and it's obviously a good moment for us to actually to incorporate this as well because it's not been set up for all that long. And so, therefore, it can be incorporated quite easily in their duties. That this council will treat care experience as if it were a protected characteristics. And this is the important part as well, to formally call upon all other bodies to treat care experience as a protected characteristic until such time as it may be introduced by legislation. It will be introduced by legislation, we feel, in the future. However, it's not there yet. And so, therefore, in all of our dealings with outside bodies, be that the police, be that the health, care, be it any other outside bodies that we deal with, then we should be encouraging them to actually take on the the idea that care experience is a protected characteristic in exactly the same way as religion or disability and so on. And finally, for the council to continue proactively seeking out and listening to the voices of care experienced people when developing new policies based on their views. Obviously, as we have seen, as I say from Mr Gallagher's question, the people who know about care experience and the discrimination that it engenders are the people who've lived through it, people with a lived experience. We currently, of course, do talk to our care experienced young people. But this needs to continue and to not only wait till they come to us, but to proactively seek out and talk to them and listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. councillor King?
Can I second that, please? Mr Mayor reserve the right to speak.
You may. councillor Hanaway?
Support the motion. I think, obviously, morally, it's important and it's important for raising awareness of this very serious problem. I don't imagine it will entirely prevent discrimination, of course. It could only do that in a world where everyone tells the truth all the time, couldn't it? But I think it's a good step forward. And the only qualification I'd say is that I think if you've, if someone fills out a form for a job or for housing and they're asked that question, have you been in care? That that should be in the voluntary part of the form, the equal opportunities form, you know, rather than being required to say that they've been in care. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanaway. councillor Sue Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I too support the motion. I do have to say that I'm a little bit disappointed that it hasn't come in a slightly different way because the report, the Children's Social Care Review, was actually published in May twenty twenty two. And I think Scotland's been doing quite a lot around this for some time. They produced a report with the Equalities and Human Rights Commission on this a few years ago. And as far as the care review report, we still haven't seen an implementation plan from that. So, we don't know when and if government is going to put this in place. And probably what would have been better in your leadership role from children's services would actually to have brought forward some proposals about how we were going to do this and the sorts of work that we could have done to actually start implementing it sooner rather than later. That would be a practical proposal rather than just talking about a resolution that I think has already been passed in a number of other authorities. I mean, you mentioned housing, and this was one of the things that was picked up, wasn't it, in the Ofsted report? And the report actually says that care leavers, our care leavers, don't have priority one status, for example, when they're trying to secure rented housing. I mean, that's something we could be dealing with, isn't it, and doing ourselves and talking to the housing providers about. And it would have been good to have a list of practical proposals that you were going to put forward to implement what exactly this new protective characteristic would mean. I also think that, you know, because we have just done the equality and diversity work, bearing in mind that it was, it's been around for some time, this, it would have been good, wouldn't it, if it had been included at the outset of that equality of diversity work? Because, of course, a lot of the training and embedding is already underway and you're going to have to go back and do it again now with this new characteristic, which I think, you know, it's just unfortunate we've missed the boat. And as I say, it would have been better to have come forward with a report and proposals rather than just a motion to full council because that's obviously your role as lead member. In terms of actually embedding this in the equality and diversity process, I mean, I think that's really important. One of the things the Scottish report says was that by doing that, what you shouldn't do is take away resources from this process. So, actually ensuring if you are, we are going to consider it a protected characteristic, that we do treat it with the same priorities as the other bits and it doesn't end up having resources taken away from it. I mean, how we do that, I mean, I was saying in scrutiny the other day there that I think there are still some issues about how we consider equalities information. I mean, I don't know about you, but I can't remember a meeting where equalities information has been put in a report that's come to this council and we've actually debated the information that's been provided in that qualities and the equalities impact assessments. We don't actually see those either because I think they're papers behind papers. So, I think there is some way to go anyway on our equality and diversity work, but adding this category in even more way to go. And as I say, it would have been nicer to have seen a programme of action that you thought you could put in place so that we can actually see the difference made that we need to have made because of the experience that was described to us earlier on. And I, you know, I fully support the proposal, but words is words, as they say, and what we need to be doing is action. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. councillor Corley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Barnes, for bringing the motion forward. And as you know, I'm all for equality and diversity. In the summer, as a council, we held an equalities and diversity conference. And there we had from all reins, from trans to autistic to, and I think if we're doing this and we're serious, part of that action would be for me to have that representation also for this characteristic because it was missing. And if this was released and we knew about it May time, then it should have been included within our conference that as a council we held. So, I'm all for the motion. It's important. But I just want, as a council, there's nothing stopping us from addressing it now. And not necessarily when a motion, it should have already been and we should have already been because it is all about being diverse and equality. And it's, for me, that's what this motion's about. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Corley. councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will certainly be supporting the motion. It contains a whole ethos of where we as a corporate authority should be demonstrating our responsibilities. However, I'm not sure that we always in practice do. So, arising out of this immediately following, hopefully, the successful passing of this motion, I do think that we need as an authority to review as a matter of priority our corporate parenting performance. If we look further and more closely at how we perform as mentors, which is the guidance given in the preview here for the discussion, I will think we will find we are lacking. So, let us be spurred by this motion to review where we are in our own performance before we go out to the world advocating that we are leading. Because in practice, we are not.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. councillor King?
Thank you. Yeah. We are certainly, I believe, lacking in our collective responsibility as corporate parents. We've tried over the last few years to put on training courses to get everybody involved, to which some parties had no representative. We had very, very few people turn up. We have engaging sessions with the children, which people are welcome to. And we're, as chair of corporate parenting board, working alongside Alison as cabinet member for children. We're open to any ideas that any members have that will engage some of the people in this council chamber in getting more involved and listening to our young people, taking part. We know that all fifty nine members can't always come to all the corporate parenting board meetings, but there are some people who haven't attended in four years and never submitted apologies. Unfortunately, they won't hear what I'm saying because they're very underrepresented again today. So, if anyone's got any ideas, as chair of the corporate parent board, please come and see me, please come and see Alison. How, anything you want to know, anything you want to engage, if we can put on more training courses, please get in touch. Obviously, I fully support this motion and having been involved with children in care for the last sixteen years and see some of the discrimination faced and some of the houses that in the past have been deemed as appropriate for them, then obviously makes sense to everybody so far for the support for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. We don't have any other councillors wishing to speak on this motion. councillor Barnes would like to sum up?
Thank you. In answer to some of the criticism levied against me regarding the fact that the report came out in May twenty twenty two, I can assure councillor Jeffrey that it has been, we have read the report and that a number of the actual suggestions and recommendations within the report have been followed up, including, I have to say, discussions with Beyond Housing regarding the considering care experienced people as being in band one. In actual fact, I believe I'm correct in saying that we would be something like the third council in the whole of the country to actually pass this motion. First, I believe, was Cumbria. And it was as a result of hearing about their experiences that led me to actually get in touch with Cumbria to ask about their motion. As I say, it's, we have not sat back and ignored what has been in the actual, the report by Josh McAllister. It has fed into the actual actions that we're taking anyway. But I felt that it was, this was something, something concrete that the council could do to show everyone within the, with all members and also to show outside bodies that it is something that we feel very strongly about. I feel that we had the opportunity today to be in the vanguard of the response to the these recommendations in the Josh McAllister report. We are all corporate parents for children and our care and care leavers. And I believe that we have the legal and the moral responsibility to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. We will now take a vote on this motion, which is by the way of show of hands. So, can I ask all councillors in favour of this motion, please show? Those against? Anyone abstaining? I think that was passed unanimously, so the motion is passed. Thank you. Moving on with our agenda, agenda item thirteen is questions. Sorry, I've missed, I'm jumping ahead of myself. Item twelve, to appoint members, and we have two appointments to look at this afternoon. And the first one is the Employment, Health and Safety Committee. Councillor Craig Holmes to fill the vacant position. Are we in favour of that? Thank you. The second item is Sir William Turner's Hospital, councillor Brady to replace councillor Leah Quartermain. Are we all in favour of that position? Thank you. Okay, item thirteen, questions from councillors. And we have one question this afternoon, and the question is from councillor Lockwood to the leader. councillor Lockwood?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. councillor Lanigan, earlier this year, you were made aware of anomalies in the authorisation spending a substantial amount of money from the twenty twenty one, twenty two highways budgets on resurfing unadopted alleyways in Margrove Park and Langdale. You said that a person responsible for the irregularity in the authorisation was an officer who is no longer with the council and who you actually named in a ministered meeting. You said there were emails and a paper trail to prove this. And despite agreeing at the time to make this paper trail available, and despite the several requests since, the emails are still not available. We've now been asking for the said paper trail for over six months. And it's also been five weeks since I originally asked this question at the last full council meeting. And the only response being that which I was sent yesterday from the head of pay services, which doesn't answer the points raised. With all this in mind, and so that the workings of the council can be seen to be open and transparent, do you now think that it would be appropriate to bring in an outside body to hold an inquiry into this? And will you set the procedure in motion for this to happen? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lockwood. councillor Lanigan?
Thank you very much for your question. The answers that you got yesterday were ones that I hadn't seen. The answers that had actually come from our managing director. I have actually had a look about going back over this because I am well aware that we did, I did, ask the questions when this was brought by one of my cabinet members to me over this issue and was assured that everything was in place that should have been in place. What I've actually got with this is the council policy evidently was to invest in areas to improve the physical appearance of the borough. And when I've looked back at the paperwork from this, evidently council approved both the corporate plan and the medium term financial strategy, which had this funding allocation within it, although it wasn't specified. So, it was then decided with the new cabinet member that actually approached me about this because I wasn't aware. And that doesn't mean that as leader of this council that I'm aware of everything that goes through my cabinet officers and the officers and the cabinet members. But when that was brought to my attention by the cabinet member uh and I wasn't aware and we discussed that and the cabinet member then decided um to pull any of this funding going forward. And she had actually made that decision to concentrate on our investment in other priority areas. There has been in the past where we have put money into areas for unadopted roads or roads that weren't safe. And I understand that this one was um done. And I also understand that a further one was done in another area of the borough um that I found out in the last ten days. Um with that, um that was prior um to councillor Craig stopping um the funding on this going forward. And I do understand that this was a great deal of money. Can I also say while I'm stood on my feet um that um councillor Hunt came to see me um about this and because he was the cabinet member at the time. And I do have to inform you that councillor Hunt um had no recog- recognition of this. He wasn't aware of this going forward. And he's had no emails to the fore of that. And he is extremely upset that he has been named in this as the cabinet member because he knew nothing about it whatsoever. And I understand that the officers, following what had happened with the corporate plan and the medium ter- term financial strategy, that that gave them authorisation to move forward. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lannigan. Councillor Lockwood, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can I just make it clear, councillor Lannigan, that it wasn't me who mentioned or who named councillor Hunt? It also wasn't me who named the the officer. It also wasn't myself who who named uh councillor Craig. But there still seems to be irregularities in the, in the approval for this funding. The fact that the cabinet member was not aware that this work was being done. Either the 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 councillor, uh the cabinet member when it started or the cabinet member when it went, who took over. Neither of them were aware of it until councillor Craig found out and stopped it. Do you not still, still not think that this 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 warrants some sort of inquiry or investigation into how this happened? We we're not talking about peanuts here.
Councillor Lockwood, your question, please.
I've I've asked the question, do you not still not think that we should be holding an inquiry? We're not talking peanuts here. We're talking two hundred and forty six thousand pound plus another hundred and ninety six thousand pound was actually earmarked for Lingdale, which was actually what uh councillor Craig stopped. So do you not think that we should be holding some sort of investigation or inquiry into how this happened? And make sure that it doesn't happen again?
Thank you, councillor Lockwood. Councillor Lannigan?
Councillor Hunt is actually, because he couldn't come here today, he's at a funeral. And he is asked for an investigation and any paperwork that you haven't received. And I'm quite sure that the council members would like to see that as well. So he has formally asked me um to um start an investigation with this. And we will be coming back to full council with all the facts. So thank you for your question.
Thank you, councillor Lannigan. And that concludes our meeting this afternoon, councillors. And I'm going to close the Borough Council meeting. Thank you for your attendance and participation.